Calling to order, the municipality of Monroeville's citizens' night and agenda-setting meeting for Thursday, November 6th, 2025 is approximately 7:00 p.m. If you'd all please rise for the pledge of allegiance, followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Have a roll call, please.
Mayor Greasock.
Here.
Mr. Hizzy.
Here.
Mr. Poach. Mr. Stevenson.
Here.
Mr. Crutt.
Here.
Mr. Adams.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
Here.
Mr. Biondo.
Here.
Mr. Graziani.
Here.
Mr. Ratcher.
Here.
Ms. Rock.
Here.
Mr. Uges.
Here.
Mr. Sollak.
Here.
Mr. Weldon.
Here.
Ms. Lang.
Here.
Welcome. This is our citizens' night and agenda-setting meeting. In a moment, we're going to open up the comment period for any municipal item where residents and taxpayers can address council. This is not a voting meeting. Everything we talk about this evening will be for consideration for next Tuesday. That'll be the voting meeting for the month of November. There'll be another comment period at the beginning of next week's meeting, which will be for the agenda items. There will also be a second comment period at the end of next week's meeting for any municipal item. But tonight's comment period is for any municipal item, for residents and taxpayers. We ask that you keep your comments to a five-minute time limit, and if there's anyone like to address council, now would be your time to do so. And if you haven't already, if you've just signed in, when you get there.
I already took care of it.
Thank you, sir, and you can state your name for the record.
My name is Robert Sarafini. I live in the 4th Ward. That's why I stated that at the beginning. I'm here to talk about last month's meeting, October 7th citizen meeting and October 14th council meeting. The topic of the meeting was the construction of a Sheetz gas station, which took care of most of the meeting. It's on the corner where the Getco gas station is and a school right across the street. That's the location. It's in Ward 3, Mr. Stevenson's area. First of all, the representatives of the Sheetz gave their sales pitch. They talked regarding measurements, construction of the building, driveways, and remodeling of the intersection. They gave a very vague traffic report, very, very vague. The next to speak were the good citizens. I want to comment on some of the good citizens. There were two women who talked about how this gas station across the street would affect the traffic in the school buses going in and out of the school. Very, very good. Second woman I was not going to mention, she gave the distance of Sheetz gas station, which was 2.6 one way and 2.7 the other way, to the next Sheetz gas station. She even went so far as to go down to 48 and 130 and even comment on that one, which I thought was rather regarding how really good she was at it. There were multiple people stood up here and said, "Why do you need it? Why do you want it? What good is it?" There was people who just visually could see the gas stations, and they said they didn't need that visual aspect. This would devalue their houses because of more stuff like that. There was also Mr. Gordon. Bob Gordon, he spoke at both meetings regarding the traffic problem. Mr. Gordon's driveway is right next to where they're going to put the gas station, right next door. There's not much leeway there, and he talked about how the traffic was. And I can verify how bad it is because I've been over to Mr. Gordon's house, and getting out of his driveway is very chaotic. Second, last but not least, I'd like to talk about Lois Stromhiller giving a traffic report. She gave a great... First of all, let me state this. She's a former councilman in the 3rd district, which is where it's going to be, and she's a highly respected member of the Society of Monroeville. I like Lois. I think everybody knows her, likes her. She gave a very good traffic report and said there was so damn much traffic it isn't funny. And this goes all the way down to Center Avenue, this road. And I don't see any reason why four people here voted for it. They voted yes on the agenda. It showed me... Well, let's put it this way. I was very surprised and disappointed by every one of your votes. And I've even discussed with Mr. Williams how bad it was after the meeting. And I just had to say it again because it's haunted me all my life. Guys did a hell of a bad job. Thank you.
I'll leave the floor open for anyone that would like to address council for any municipal item.
Good evening. Debbie Ezok, Ward 1. Live on Covington Drive for the past 33 years, and I've always been involved in as many good ways in Monroeville that I possibly can. I'm here tonight, Mayor Greasock, Mayor DeGraziano, members of council, everyone who is hearing us talk tonight, to ask for some help, to ask for some empathy, to open your hearts. As we all know, we are in a food crisis with many of our food pantries right now. Many of our neighbors are in dire desperate need. You hear on the news night after night of what is happening, the lines, the unprecedented increase, where the food pantries are faced with just unbelievable need to help people out. I have... I had an idea several weeks ago and actually approached Rabbi Mendy, who heard me out and said, "Yes." I soon thereafter met with Pastor Lindsay Ward from Crossroads, and we have put together a food drive on November 11th. Our three food pantries in Monroeville, the food just doesn't stay on the shelf. It comes in and it goes out just as fast. So there are three food pantries in Monroeville plus Gateway High School Food Distribution Center. On November 11th...
Can you put it on the... On the square right in the center there.
I can do that.
Yep, there's a little sticker there.
But I'd like to also pass these to all council members.
Thank you.
November 11th, we will be over at the Monroeville Convention Center.
You spin that around. Sorry.
Monroeville Convention Center. We are asking for non-perishable food items. We will be there from 11:00 to 3:00 p.m., not AM, PM. If you can... I know it's in the middle of the week, the middle of the day. If you can't make it during that time, the Senior Citizen Center will also be accepting food donations for us, and you can always take them right to the food pantry. Right now, my garage, my neighbors have been dropping off food to my house. So we just... Neighbors need to help neighbors right now. We are in just a really difficult spot, and there's no reason why we can't be good to each other right now. So I hope that some of you will come down, you know, to shop, just stop at the grocery store, you know, get a couple of items. It will make a huge difference for a lot of people right now. So I would thank you for that.
Do you have receptacle boxes?
We do not. This was put together pretty quickly. We are renting a U-Haul truck. Hopefully, we're going to fill it. We don't have any receptacle boxes out right now, except at the Senior Citizen Center. Tara did put out a container yesterday because I was there, and...
And each of the food banks have ways that you can directly donate to their...
They do. You do. We're trying to make it as many people, you know, right before the holidays, there's always a big need, but this is even more.
Next Tuesday, November 11th.
From 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. So I would thank you for your help.
Yeah, and we'll certainly advertise this through our channels.
Thank you.
Give approval to it.
Neighbors help neighbors right now.
Yeah, so we'll definitely advertise through our channels, our social media, through the municipality, but that's definitely a great gesture, and yeah, please, please show up. I'll leave the floor open for residents who'd like to address council on any municipal item.
Good evening, Mayor.
Hello.
Diana Woodhall. I'd like to speak for a minute just on thanking Scott Harrington for coming and introducing himself in front of council and talking about some of his background, his experience with Walmart. But I was a little disappointed when I saw that they had applied for 7.5 million, and I know that's in grant money to demolish the mall. And I just want to read, this is an article, I read it before, Thursday, May 29th, "Retail Expansion: Walmart Continues to Expand Pittsburgh Area Footprint With the Purchase of Bethel Park Shopping Center." On Tuesday, "The Wall Street Journal Reported Walmart Plan to Lay Off 1,500 Workers in U.S. Restructuring Aimed at Trimming Its Expenses and Speeding Up Decision-Making for the Company That Says It Employs 1.6 Million in the United States, 2.1 Million People Worldwide." It operates 10,750 stores in 19 countries and reported 165.6 billion in revenue in the first quarter of the fiscal year. I don't think that this is a company that should be applying for grant money, 7.5 million. And just wanted to remind you of that. Also, as far as the redevelopment of Monroeville Mall on February 13th, when that first came out, that they had been talking and that Mary, you and your team had met with them several times from October until their closing was in January. And one of the things that they said, and honestly, I felt really good about it, is that "We are hoping to engage a design team in the next 30 days, and we need to do a study in the community to see what the residents are looking for," he said. "We're looking forward to a productive relationship with the municipality and with the residents." And so far, we haven't had any input. We weren't able to give any input. When Mr. Harrington was here, he mentioned, you know, they would be presenting their design plans, and when they present them, they'd be taking input from the residents. That's not including the residents. It's not what we were told, and it's disappointing to have this occurring. And every article that you look at, whether it's in The Times Express, they're leaving people in the dark, not just the residents, but also tenants that have been loyal in the Monroeville Mall. So that's something that I would ask once again to try and get them to meet with the residents, not when the plans are done, but for the residents to be part of the planning process. Also, I wanted to speak about you at the Range USA, but I'd like to listen to the presentation that this gentleman has, and I may not have to ask any questions. He may be answering them for me as we go, so is that okay?
Yeah, well, there'll be a comment period at the beginning of next Tuesday's meeting that you could ask questions or actually you could comment on it at that point prior to the vote. Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, it's a conditional use hearing, so you'd have an opportunity at that point as well tonight.
Okay. Thank you.
I'll leave the floor open.
You guys are in trouble because I've got notes tonight.
You state your name for the record, please.
Okay, my name's Diana Etigary. I live on Evergreen Drive in Garden City, and our situation is improving over there. I think people are tired of going uphill and everything, so that has improved. I would like to continue on what the lady just said before me. Anything I had read prior to hearing about in the news again, and I don't remember them saying anything the night that they were here last, when they were here last week, but adding both the Sam's Club and Walmart in one section, that's going to be terrible. I get around quite a bit through Pennsylvania just because I know a lot of people. But on Plank Road in Holidaysburg, there is a plaza that has the Walmart and the Sam's Club in it. It must consume an area of at least 50 acres. It's one big, open, blacktopped area. No trees, no nothing, just everything's all a big mess up there. It's not pretty, it's not anything. And I remember that at one point, Monroeville had a beautification thing where people were supposed to be, their properties along the roads, you know, appeasing to people's eyes. And that doesn't seem to be very appeasing to me. And also, that's just, I don't know. There's not going to be any draw here for Monroeville except for the Miracle Mall. You take away Macy's, you take away Dick's, you take away the movies. You'd be surprised how many people from Murraysville and Delmon come to see the movies here in Monroeville. If the way they're talking, it's going to be gone. And also, like they said, Penny's and Macy's, if they're all gone, there's nothing much to bring people here to Monroeville for. And we want to have a Monroeville where people like it. They don't want to say, "Oh, I don't want to go there, I'll get shot," because I've heard that so many times. People in PT are really bad at that. Sorry, PT. Also, all of this construction that is going around in Monroeville, that's wonderful, but when we hashed it out about the apartments that were going to be built on Evergreen Drive, we said about we didn't want all of the vegetation gone and to leave some vegetation there that was still compatible with what, you know, needed to be there for the animals and everything else in the area. Well, they did a little bit, but they only left a strip that they had to leave because it actually belonged to the last neighbors in that row. But they put in poplar trees. We complained about those. They did replace those with maple trees. But, you know, it was... Other than that, it's just an open place. They are very nice apartments, but it's just getting to be too much lack of what used to be Monroeville here. It's becoming more cement and blacktop than it is becoming the Monroeville that I've known since I was two years old. So I just wish that, you know, that would be looked into, some sort of stipulation about removing trees and natural cover and that sort of thing. What else? Oh, the newest ones that are opposite the ones on my street, that property had belonged to Palmero's over there. It was beautiful. It was all well landscaped, beautiful oak trees, maple trees. They went through and just leveled everything. And in the meantime, they had to remove all of those trees. They did decide to move all the trees along the creek, and it ended up being a bulldozer in the creek. So I think they should stay away from things along the creeks and just leave them alone. I don't know. The airport, I hope nobody brings that up ever again. Whoever approved that without a right of way going into it didn't plan well. So... And Sheetz, no. I say no to Sheetz, too. And I think that's all I'm going to say. Thank you very much.
Lois Stromhiller. And I think I've heard a lot about what I initially got pretty heated over last month, which was characters of neighborhoods, and that's what the zoning law is all about. That's what the comprehensive plan is all about. I hope that the comprehensive plan, which should be updated every 15 years, is taken a little more seriously, as it should have been done so in 20... Let's see, it was 2005, so it would have been 2020. What I wanted to discuss, though, tonight was the development application of Range USA, and also in keeping with the character. Yes?
You're aware that's conditional use. Would you like to save your comments on that for later?
Are you having a hearing?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Did I not see that in here?
Second page of the agenda.
Okay. I'll flip back to that, and I'll reserve that comment. Yes.
Okay.
But going with what was said tonight and seeing what we have to have in front of us, I think there are a lot of... I wish the media wasn't here for a quick video that they can rush back and get by the 11 o'clock, because I think the story of the development from Cypress Equities and all of that conversation is like a growing rumor, a game of telephone, where you're passing down something from the first to the last person. There are things that have been taken away and added personally. I don't think Sam's Club had anything to do with the development. Sam's Club is where it is, and when I had earlier discussions with Mr. Harrington, there was no plan for Sam's to be competing with him or on the property with him.
Correct.
And so a lot of this stuff needs to be discussed before plans are ever presented, and all of the planning commission needs to be engaged and use all the tools that they have in paper form. And that paper form should include everything that a planning commission should have so that they can, with some background knowledge, knowledge is power, go into a session and actually look at a comprehensive plan and decide that, gee, what are these failing intersections that we have that are regulated and some of them aren't regulated? That's what I tried to explain to this council last night, and three members here were very helpful in understanding that. And the rest of you need to catch up. That's just what everybody has to do when you're on council. I think in the budget, you should have something for a local government academy, for anybody who's a newly elected official. You don't understand this stuff until you have that presented to you. There are superseding laws. There are things that are relevant to what you do. And so that's all I'm going to say for now. I'll save the rest for later. Thank you very much.
I will leave the floor open for anyone who'd like to address council on any municipal item. And yeah, just for a point of clarification, there are two conditional use public hearings this evening, so there'll be another comment period for each of those. That is the Range USA and for the Abad Jewish Center of Monroeville. But I will leave the floor open for any municipal item for residents and taxpayers. Closing the comment period, there will be, once again, another, there'll be two comment periods, next Tuesday or this coming Tuesday, one at the start of the meeting, which is for any agenda item, and then at the end of the same meeting for, once again, just like this was, an open forum for any municipal item. So council, we're moving through our agenda here, and this evening, we're going to start with a show cause hearing. Show cause hearing is for the proposed condemnation and demolition of properties. We have seven listed this evening. We have staff member Jason Sonnenfeld will be presenting, and he has a slideshow on each of these. That is the show cause. So Jason, the floor is yours.
Good evening. Okay, this is our 2025 show cause hearing for Act 152 grants that we received for an application we submitted back in 2024. I believe the number is 133,000.
Yes.
For a total of all these. We submit the application with the proposed properties. When we get it back, they tell us what properties off that list are to be demolished once everything goes through, if everything is approved. We submit the cost estimates, and then they give us the money for that, and then the COG handles all the bids and the demolitions, and we just kind of oversee the sites on that. So tonight, there's a handful of properties throughout the municipality. So all structures currently are vacant. Initial letters were sent out in August of 2024. Second notifications were sent out in 2025. So since this process started in '24, that's when we send everything out initially. We post the buildings. We do all that. Once we find out what buildings we get and we get the notification back, we send another round of notifications, and then we post the buildings again, so everything is updated.
Let me interject one thing, Jason, before you go. When we talk about notifications, before, this is like from a building standpoint. Years prior to this, it's all code enforcement.
Yes.
It's all property maintenance. Property maintenance goes on for a few years until the building becomes dilapidated. Then it becomes a building issue, and that's when we get into the unsafe structure. So while we're talking about a short window here, it's actually been a long window, probably five to seven years of a lot of this, starting with property maintenance.
This is our fourth round, I think, fourth or fifth round of this, that we've done. Again, all these properties have just kind of been sitting there waiting, and as we get through the list, some of these have been on there a couple times. There's one on here this evening that was on there, I believe, two years ago, and it's back on the list because nothing was done. So we're just kind of revisiting some of these. As far as the notifications, everything went out by regular mail, certified mail, so we had copies of everything. All structures were posted as required. The legal notices went out for the hearing this evening, and then the legal ads were sent out where it was advertised on two different times. The property list for this evening is 201 Madison, 320 Valley, 336 Steele, 2060 Monroeville Road, 2046 Pickaran Road, 2789 Broadway Boulevard, and 3958 Monroeville Boulevard. One issue with that property is there's actually three different buildings that have that same address, if you look at it up on the map. It's the middle building, it's a garage, and you'll see some photos of that as we get through this evening. So the first property is 201 Madison Street. The owner on record did send us a letter that they have been renovating the building, but it's been under renovation for quite some time. The inside, the drywall's been removed, the flooring's been removed, and it has been in that state of repair for seven-plus years now. Unknown utilities. I do not believe there's any running water or electricity. And again, they are, it is vacant. There's a detached garage, and there's occupied residences and businesses around this property. So there's two photos you can see here. This sits up on the hill, it's ready to bend on Madison before you start to come back down to Northern Pike. And all these photos are submitted with the application process, and that's how they view everything once we start this. So we have to submit four photos with the application for every property if they're able to be obtained. And this is the detached garage for that property. Second one this evening is 320 Valley Road. This is the one that is the second time around for us. We've had no response from that owner. The owner for this property actually lives up the street on Steele, at the corner of Steele and Roberts. It's been vacant for over seven years. There's no utilities there. There's multiple vehicles, high vegetation all around the property, and again, multiple occupied residents around this structure. So you can see, the photo to the left is actually a utility truck that's in the driveway that is fully overgrown, and then the picture to the right is all the overgrown vegetation coming up around the house. These are two back views of the house, vegetation grown all on it. The windows are still intact. The doors are intact, but the vegetation is starting to take over the property. Third one, same area, is 336 Steele Street. This is down in Aderly as well. The owner on record, no response. I actually believe they passed away, and there is no family to take ownership of this building. It's been vacant for just about seven years. No utilities. There is an accessory structure on the property, and again, there's occupied residents around. It sits up on the hill. It backs the landfill property, so we actually have to go up around the driveway, which is all completely overgrown to this point, to get up to the property. Two more of the photos, and then this is the detached building that is on site as well. Next property is 2060 Monroeville Road. I believe the owner for this property is in the audience tonight, so once I'm done with this, if you want to have them come up and ask any questions, that's fine. The owner on record, they did contact our office. I believe they had discussions with Mr. Weldon and Mr. Uges. It's been vacant for quite some time. There's no utilities that I'm aware of, and again, occupied residents and businesses around that area. Do you want to do the comment for this one now, or...
Let's go through all of them.
Okay. Here's two photos of this. This is just down from Carlois and Main Street around the bend on Monroeville Road. And with this program, we are allowed to submit residential and commercial buildings, so this is one of the commercial-type buildings that are on the list. 2046 Monroeville, I'm sorry, Pickaran Road. We've had no response from those owners. It's been vacant for over seven years. No utilities. There are no residential or business... been vacant for over seven years. No utilities, there are no residential or businesses around this. Actually, back, back Monroeville Park over the hill, it's by the old lineshead, there's a reference point for you. Long driveway that goes up to the property, but it's been barricaded off with a large tree and piles of dirt to get up there. And there's a detached garage up there. 2789 Broadway Boulevard, I believe the owner of record is in attendance as well this evening. This is a multi-family dwelling, it's been vacant for a few years. Unknown on the utility status, they could speak to that, and again, occupied residents around the area. We've, another resident area has always brought this property up to our attention, if there's any issues with it, and it's been a concern for the people in that area, so that is why it has made it onto the list. And finally, is 3958 Monroeville Boulevard. It actually sits by Northern Pike Garden Apartments and the church, it sits back off the road. It is a garage-type structure, no record, or no contact with the owner, there's no utilities to it. It's utilized for storage, looks like some roofing material, it's been there for quite some time, and there is an occupied residence just past it, they all use the same common driveway, and then prior to that, there's a apartment and a business, and there's apartment complex to the right and a church to the left of the property. And those are all the properties for this evening. There's some photos of them, you can see. And again, all these photos were submitted with the application process back in 2024. And that concludes the properties and all the information.
Thank you. Jason, is there anyone in the audience that would like to add comment for any of these properties?
Mm-hmm.
Please. And we'll make sure, everybody's got, we'll have plenty of time.
Good evening. My name is Cindy Steiner. I'm the owner of 201 Madison Street. My husband, Thomas McDonough, originally owned that house, and he's passed away.
Okay, and this is a show cause hearing. I'm going to swear you in, if that's okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
Did you sign in, ma'am?
Yes.
Thank you.
Please.
Thank you. I own this property through my husband. Technically, it's not vacant. I've been using it for storage. I have utilities to it, I've been paying utilities every month, I pay my taxes. I've had three contractors look at this house. Since I got the first letter, they've all told me, there's nothing unsafe, there's nothing unstructural with this house. I have called the phone number on the letters. When you call that number, no one answers, you get a voicemail that says, this is the voicemail of Patrick Fulkerson, please leave a message. I've left several messages, and no one's ever called me back. I sent a letter saying, I don't know what the problem is. I can't address an issue unless I know what the problem is. No one's ever told me what you deem this property to be unsafe or hazardous. I have had a new roof put on this year, even though it was only 18 years old, I knew it had a couple years left, but I had a brand-new roof put on it. I've had dumpsters in there this year. The interior, the drywall, the insulation has been removed, so we can start the process of putting new insulation, new walls. I've had the carpeting all taken up, we're putting new flooring down. I've always maintained this property as far as mowing and pulling weeds. This paragraph in these letters I get say that a building can be unsafe for several reasons. One, inadequate means of egress. Well, there's no problem with egress, either with the house or the driveway. Inadequate lighter ventilation, there's no problems with that. I've had, the electric's always on, I have outdoor motion lights at nighttime, there's no ventilation problems. Another one is fire hazard. I have no solvents, chemicals, I don't have debris laying around, so I don't know what the issue would be with being a fire hazard. Another one is illegal or improper occupancy. Well, I have furniture and other things that I had stored in there, I don't think that's illegal or improper. One is inadequate maintenance. I'm not aware of any inadequate maintenance issues. Like I said, the roof is getting to where it needed to be replaced, I've had a brand-new roof. You know, I need to get energy-efficient windows, but all the windows, none of them are broken, they all work. There's no problem that I know of. No one has contacted me to tell me what the issue is. I'd be glad to address it if I knew what it was, but no one has told me. And then the last one is a vacant building. Well, again, I don't think it's vacant, but it's, if it's not secure, it can be considered unsafe. Well, I've got locks in the back door, the front door, the garage door, we've had it secured from the inside so that no one can lift it. The house is secure, so I don't know what the issue is.
So did you contact anyone from the Building and Engineering Department? Because you mentioned-
I've called this number.
Patrick Fulkerson is the tax collector.
Well, and-
We did receive the letters, but there's no address on the letters, or phone numbers, or anything from her.
Yeah, there's-
On the letters.
On the letters, it says that if you have any questions, contact 412-856-3348. I've called that number a number of times, and like I said, no one answers, you get a voicemail that says, this is Patrick Fulkerson's office. So, I leave voicemail message saying, I've got this letter from Jason Sonafelt, please have him call me about this property. I mean, here's the letters, it's got that phone number on it, and I sent a letter saying, please tell me what the issue is, and no one's ever contacted me in regard to my letter. So I don't know what the problem is.
What's, what's your intent with the property? Are you?
Well, I'm not sure at this point. I may sell it, I may deed it to my daughter. I have several people that have been contacting me that want to buy it and live in it, so we're in the process of having it remodeled, so that I can do one of these things with it. I don't intend to live in it ever again, but I will have someone in it.
And there's not an occupancy-
I was a widow, I, you know, I was, my husband spent-
There's no current occupancy, and technically it is vacant, because nobody's living there. It is, it is a vacant structure.
Can we take a second look at this?
Yeah.
Between now and Tuesday, and, yeah.
Yep.
Let's do that.
Can we see that she gets a decent phone number for contacting the right people?
Yep.
Yeah, why, why, why would they call the tax office instead of the Building Department?
That's the number that's on-
I don't know, that's, I can see the letters, that's the phone number on the letters here.
There's also some numbers at the top of the letter as well, that they-
Well, but they all say, if you have any questions, call this number, so that's the number I've been calling.
It's a clarifier.
If you could provide, this evening, if you could provide your, your contact phone number, and then if we could have staff look into this over the next few days, and check with the tax office for both Monroeville Gateway and Allegheny County, so we have more information for next Tuesday.
Sure, I'd be happy to, I mean, but I just need to know what the problem is. Thank you.
Thank you. I saw some other hands about the properties, sir? You just sign in, and then once you sign in, if you could just state your name for the record?
My name is Walter Sewell.
Walter, if I could just have you swear, sworn in for a moment here? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Came for a reference to 2789 Broadway. I've been, I have been doing work on the property for a number of years. No one has been living there. I do have electricity on in the property. Recently, put a, put new service pan, electrical service on exterior this summer. Have did some minor remodeling inside a couple of the apartments, it's a four-unit apartment. I've been trying, well, I've been maintaining the yard, making sure it stays cut, repaired the roof. And I got a letter saying that it was, it was vacant and the structure didn't sound. I actually made arrangements for a structural engineer to come in tomorrow, go take a look at the property, making arrangements now, or, well, I already have made, made some arrangements to have an actual contractor come in and try to speed up the process, so that we can get this back on, on the rolls, so that way we can get them back, and so that we can get some residents in there.
Sir, you're going to meet with the, the engineer next couple days?
Yes, I'll be tomorrow.
Okay, so make sure you get ahold of the Building Department. Make sure you have a good number, so you can call them and share the results of the engineer's examination of property.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Walter. Are there other representatives here for some of the other properties?
No.
320 Valley Road.
Your name, sir?
Michael Polanik.
And then Michael, if you could sign, sign in there, if you don't mind.
Up here, I already did.
Okay, very good, thank you. And then Michael, if I could swear you in? You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you. You want to add comment about the property?
Oh, yeah. I got a notice with various violations that said I should have them fixed up by November 2nd, and I hired someone, they removed all the brush, and I also hired them to remove the stuff that I had stored in the trucks to run the property, and he did half of the job, and he just sort of like flaked off. And then on, yesterday, he came back and he did most of the job, there's still a little bit left in one of the trucks. As soon as he has my stuff removed from the trucks, I can get them towed out. You know, I don't have a problem with that. As far as structurally, I don't, can't think of anything wrong structurally with the property, but I know it has been an eyesore, and I know it's been an eyesore for a while, and the last week and a half, I've been there cleaning, cleaning it up, and I hope to continue to do so.
Sir, have you previously been here on a hearing for this property?
Yes.
Yeah, this was the second time. There was an extension granted the last time, and then since that last, there's been no-
What year was that? It wasn't last year, correct?
No, it wasn't last year.
Two years ago, maybe?
I want to say it was two, maybe three years.
Three years, yeah.
Two, three.
Not three at all.
What happened with that plan?
What happened with that plan is life got in the way. See, I take care of several disabled people that take a lot of my time, and when I wake up in the morning, I think, like, who needs me the most today? And then I do that, and it's always, there's always someone there that needs me. I don't make any money from it. I don't make any money, period, except for, you know, like, picking up scrap and stuff like that, but it's enough to keep me going from one day to the next. And now I have like a window of opportunity, and it's been an incentive that I've got these notices for me to like make this a priority, and for the last couple weeks, I've made it a priority, and I, you know, paid to have the brush removed, I paid to have the trucks emptied out, because I had a lot of building materials stored in it, and he was supposed to have been done like a week and a half ago, when I could have had the trucks moved out, but then he didn't show up, he didn't show up. He said I was going to show up. He did show up on Friday, no, no, last night. He's, no, he said he was going to show up on Friday, but he showed up last night and got most of it moved out, except for one truck has still about half full, and as soon as that's done, I can get the tow trucks in to take them, I'm going to take them to Josh Steele, down the street there in Braddock, and I got sent away for the titles, I got the title, so that's all set up, and that's the current situation.
Okay, would you, would you be down there either Monday or Tuesday next week if one of the code enforcement people came down to meet you?
Yeah, the code enforcement people have been down there the last couple days, and I've been there working on it.
Okay, you're going to be around, so if they come down?
Yeah.
They can talk, you, talk to you, see what progress you've made and such?
Yeah, he's, he also said to me, he says, oh, he says, I see you're making progress, just keep me posted.
Okay.
You do understand, this is the second time this property's been here.
I understand, and I understand the concerns.
Extension, and it wasn't just a 30-day or 60-day, it was actually like a two-year.
I understand that.
It's a long time.
And I do appreciate that, and, but as of right now, I'm really making a strong effort to take care of the problems.
If we could have you connected with code enforcement, I think that'd be, that'd be a good thing.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here to comment on any of these properties, the seven properties?
Bernard Blake, 26th Monroeville Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, sir, I didn't hear your name.
Bernard Blake, 26th Monroeville Road.
Bernard, if you could, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
I originally bought this property, I was going to just flip it and move on, but since then, my son bought a boat, and so I plan, my plan is to, the, the building is a block building. There's a little corner of it, it's, it's like a brick addition onto the building, and I don't want that. It's not part of the building at all. The building is a block building and a concrete floor, and if someone loaned away, put a brick extension on, but it does not attach to the building at all, I'm just going to tear it down and throw it away. And my plan is to, I want to raise up about four or five more block, because the boat won't fit, and then put a new roof on the whole thing, because I know that the roof's no good. But the block building, the foundation, it's strong, there's no cracks, except that little L in the front, but it's not part of the building. And I just want to say that since I've had it, I have kept it clean. I have a guy maintains the yard, and as far as my building there, my neighbor, you know, he was cited for tires, and a lot of his tires were on my property. So when he got cited, he had to get it cleaned up. Well, I had to pay a thousand dollars of his tires, because they rolled their tires onto my property, and I walked over and said, could you, you clean these up too? And they told me to apply a cut. So I, I cleaned the tires myself up. But, so next, next door, they have a junkyard next door. They have contaminants from the oil, the transmission, the radiator, it goes into the creek there when it rains. So if I, if I can do what I want with my building, it's clean, there's nothing there, I'm not bothering anybody. Next door is, I think there's a problem there, so if they can have what they have and not get cited, and I'm just clean, all I want to do is do what I want to do, and if I get the same courtesy, maybe meeting somebody, and I'll show them what I want to do, and if they want that little corner out of there, it doesn't belong there, I'll take it down now, because it does have a crack in it, but it's not part of the building.
When did you purchase the property?
I'd say, I'm not sure, about, I mean, four years ago.
Four.
Yeah, it's on the website, I'm not sure.
Could you come up with like a preliminary plan of, you know, timeline plan? I'm not talking about something drawn out.
Sure, whatever you, well, I'll tell you.
Just for counsel's consideration on Tuesday night.
And just understand, you can't just tear off half a building and re-
It's just a little corner.
I understand, but there's still permits and things that need to go through.
Sure, sure.
You have to put under.
Oh, I wouldn't, I wouldn't touch without, without coming and showing the whole thing, but I'll meet somebody to show them. Right now, I mean, I would try and work with whatever you want to do, because I want to give it to my son, and it's a nice, it's a nice lot, so it's not a bad thing to have. It's, it's a nice size for putting boats and maybe a truck or something on there, but I'm, I'm involved with something right now that I'm finishing, so when I finish what I'm doing right now, I'm going to come over here and do that. Now, I'm hoping, I'm hoping within the next maybe six months, I'll have finished what I'm doing. I'm doing a pretty big project, 100, 100, 100 townhouses. So when I finish this project I'm involved in, then I will take that money, I'm making it from the development I'm doing, and come over here and do this. But I can't, I'm stretched a little thin right now, because we've already put millions into it, so that's where I'm at.
But if we could get you connected with staff in the next few days to-
Sure, I'll show them exactly.
Code enforcement's been on it a couple times over the years about the front garage door that had a hole in the bottom corner of it, and so-
And that just happened recently, though. Someone, someone took my, but I did put, there is something in the front right now, so it looks nice, well, it still looks like a pig, but there's something that's covering where the kid, the garage, but the garage door is no good either. I don't want that either. So I, I have plans, like I raise it up, put a new roof on the whole thing, and make it look nice, and I'm hoping to do it next spring, that's what I want to do. So I'm hoping I'm going to finish my project, and I have some meetings tomorrow, as a matter of fact, at 11 o'clock concerning my project, I'm trying to finish it up, and so I'll know better where I, where I'm going to be financially, probably in the next month or so. Like I said, my, my project's, it's taking a lot of money.
Does code enforcement have contact information for you, Mr. Blake?
I'm not sure, I'm sure-
Okay, why don't you leave- Okay, why don't you leave your, leave your number with them, so they know how to get ahold of you?
Okay.
So we can get something, and then for council's consideration on Tuesday night?
Yeah. Yeah, I just want you to know, I'm not trying to, I'm not avoiding the thing. I, sometimes people dump things there, and I have something to go right away, and mattresses, or furniture, whatever. You know, I take care of it right away and get it out of there. So I know it's, I know it's not pretty looking, I get that. But it is solid, there's no cracks, the foundation's nice, so that's the only thing good about it.
Let's make sure you leave your contact information, so...
Okay.
They can be in contact.
Who I live with. Oh, okay. Am I done?
Yeah.
Yes.
Very good, thank you.
That's your phone number.
Anybody else in the audience?
Yeah, is there anyone else in the audience that would like to add comment for any of these properties? Council, any questions for Jason or staff? Any comment?
If any of the properties do come off, we cannot add anything, and it's not a big deal if they come off. They just come off, the rest of them will go out to bid, and then the money just goes back to the cog. It's not a, it's not a big thing to remove any properties off, we're just, we're not permitted to add something on in its place.
But you can work something out with some of these people?
Yeah, something can be worked out between the staff and them, and if we just take them off the list, off the bid list, it's not a big deal.
Can we get the images of the properties?
What's that?
Can we get the images of all the properties?
Yeah.
If council can get a copy, that'd be great.
And again, let me just reiterate, you know, these people come up here, we have been in, with communication to them by certified males for seven years.
We've been to all these properties.
And most of them put it on ignore. And all of a sudden, we have a show cause hearing, they show up. So, you know, from our perspective, we get frustrated because we don't hear from them. We hear from elected officials, we hear from residents complaining about properties, and it takes this to get something done.
That is very typical, thanks for highlighting that, Mr. Hughes.
A number of them, council member beyond, you can see from street view pretty good as well.
Yep.
Like the Pickering one, you can't, you just see hillside, but like this last property and a few others that have been, you get on Google Maps, do the street view, you can pretty good, a pretty good sense of what it looks like from curb.
Yeah, that Pickering red one is, it's up the hill, up on top of it. Right toward the backside of the community park.
Son of a, great job, thank you so much.
Thank you very much, have a good evening.
You too.
Moving through the agenda, we have two conditional use public hearings. Range USA and the Haba Jewish Center of Monroeville. We're starting with 25-6-C Range USA, conditional use approval. Mr. Graziani, please.
Sorry, I was looking at something. Okay, so this is an applicant, Range USA is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Article 5, Section 504.KK, gun range indoor of the Monroeville zoning ordinance, number 2779, is amended to permit the operation of an indoor gun range. The property address is 300 Mall Boulevard, and is identified as tax parcel 638-S-240 in the Boulevard zoning district. And again, this is nearby the Olive Garden and the plaza there. I believe there may have been a spirit store in there, most recently, maybe last Halloween season.
Is the applicant here?
Yes.
Come on up, you want to state your name for the record, and...
I'm Kevin O'Leam with Range USA, thank you all for your time this evening.
Have you signed in?
Yes, sir, signed in.
So Kevin, I'm gonna swear you in, actually.
Yes.
This is a conditional use, conditional use approval that we're considering for next Tuesday. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Floor is yours.
Range USA has been in this market for about three years, we're in Robinson Township on the Ring Road to the mall. And we are very much interested in becoming one of the business folks in Monroeville. You know the location? It is the end cap of the center with Patel Brothers, I think...
Taipei Tokyo.
Yes, yes, that would be, that would be the adjoining property.
I'll lay this out so everybody can see. It's 12,100 square feet.
Range USA is the largest chain of indoor gun ranges in the country by about times five. There's 50 locations, we run from Minneapolis to San Antonio, Kansas City, to very close to Virginia Beach. It's probably more of a Chester, Virginia address, but it's close to Virginia Beach. We are the nation's largest gun safety educator by far. We educate about 35,000 people a year in some form or fashion of gun safety, hunting safety, or proper firearm use and storage. We, we cater to the beginner, the neophyte. We're not Crazy Ed's Gun Emporium. If our, our typical footprint's about 15,000 feet, and two-thirds of our square footage is dedicated to education and training. So the retail floor is by far a small piece. We'll have a classroom, we'll have a private classroom for private lessons, and we'll have a, a number of indoor ranges, probably 12 is what will be able to fit in this location. And we've been good corporate citizens in Robinson. Hopefully, I've encouraged over the last couple of months, everyone to please call the police chief in Robinson, call the city manager in Robinson. My words are cheap, but my actions speak volumes. So the behavior we've displayed in Robinson is the behavior we will display here. We've had some folks tour the location in Robinson. It's, it's well-lit, it's safe, it's secure, it's welcoming. The owner of Range USA in 2012 went to an indoor gun range in Cincinnati with a friend he had never been before. And when they were done, he said to his buddy, are they always this rude and condescending to someone who doesn't speak fluent gun speak? He said, yes. Is it always this expensive? Yes. Is it always lined out the door? Yes. And he said, I think I can do this better. And, and he has, so it's been a pretty neat process to watch. I've been helping them find locations and get them approved for the last 10 years. We, we have a floor plant, we have an elevation that I can lay out that everyone might be interested in. This would be, let me close this up. This would be our, our proposed floor plant if we were approved. And our front elevation, disregard the teal-green architectural feature at the top, that's now, I think, more of a, a dark gray. But that's what we would propose to do. Now, our sign package here violates your sign code. So we would be asking for a relief on sign code, and whether we get that or not was, you know, yet to be determined. If we even get through, through the conditional use permit process.
Yeah, because that'd be a zoning hearing, if they have a separate, separate body.
So Range USA will, will have a well-lit parking lot. We'll have hurricane shutter on the front door. We'll have bollards at every exterior entrance, and we limit the number of exterior entrances the best we can. We'll have bulletproof glass for the range. We'll have bulletproof steel in between the shooting stalls and bulletproof glass. We'll build a, a separate concrete box inside of this box that we'll be renting to house the range. So we'll trench out the floor, pour in footers, put in solid CMU block. And that'll be the, the walls of our indoor gun range. That helps with two things, one, safety, and two, sound. That will help contain sound. When it comes to helping contain sound, we'll use a number of different things. We have some noise-absorbing rubber that will be inside the range. We have this spray-on insulating foam called K-13 that will spray the deck, will spray the walls up from about 12 feet up. And that will help dampen sound. We're gonna build a faux wall between us and the Asian restaurant. So there'll be an air gap and a separate wall built that entire distance from floor to ceiling with a layer of mineral wool, the studs, insulation, and then probably another layer of mineral wool, and then drywall. So we want to make sure that, that the reverberation isn't going through into the restaurant. Because if your phone's ringing, my phone's probably ringing. So we'll, we're very much aware of the necessity to contain, to contain sound. I think Paul came out, Mr. Wheeling came out to our range in Robinson, and we shot 223, which is a fairly large round, in the range, so we could hear the sound on the retail floor. And I'm gonna guess that sound did not violate your noise ordinance inside our store on the retail floor. And then you could hear what it sounds like outside the store. It's a dull, it's a dull fudge.
Let, let Mr. Walden respond to that.
Yes, sir.
Very accurate. I listened inside and outside, and from outside, it sounded like somebody moving furniture through the wall.
What caliber did you go shooting there?
The range that we have, the bullet trap system could accept a 50 BMG. Nowhere near that, 300, Win Mag, too high, too hot. It's really 308 down is what's acceptable. But the, the system that the US military uses on their bases, in most cases, is, can accept a 50 BMG. Way too loud, way too disruptive, and it's a 25-yard range. I mean, that, that round's seven or eight dollars apiece, you really don't want to be wasting those in a 25.
So this is not just pistols, it's also rifles?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Yes, it is.
Do you run a background check on people, customers that come in that you, I guess they can rent a firearm from you to shoot?
We, we will copy a driver's license and hang on to the driver's license while they're shooting. So if someone is shooting, we will have possession of the driver's license.
So you don't know if someone...
We do not run a background check.
You're getting a handgun to is a criminal or not, or has a criminal history?
We, we do not run background checks, so that could be a possibility, and that would be a violation of, of their situation. But we do not run a background check on someone that wants to rent a gun and shoot on the, on the range. We run background checks on anyone and everyone that wants to purchase a firearm. We don't agree with person-to-person transfers, so we don't go to gun shows, we don't go to, to gun flea markets. We don't advertise there, we don't set up tables there, because we don't think person-to-person transfers are wise.
So you also sell guns there, though?
Yes, sir.
Rifles and pistols?
Yes, sir.
And ammunition?
Yes, sir. We do not sell black powder, we do not sell Tannerite.
Some of your other locations, are, do you share a plaza or a building with other?
Yes, sir.
Or are they mostly freestanders?
This is, this is not the only one, they are most freestanders. But we are in end caps of centers, that is, this will not be the first one.
Would you state it was, how wide's the shooting stalls?
34 inches.
And they're bulletproof both sides?
Yes, sir.
How about the ceiling?
The ceiling will be, there'll be baffles that are staged down, so it's, it's, it's mathematical equation. So we have a professional range company come in and designs the range, and there will be baffles down that will not allow any projectiles to go up to the ceiling.
So ricochet bullet would ricochet down to the ground?
It would, well, there's foam on those baffles, those steel baffles have a layer of foam that are projectile-absorbing foam.
Okay, now, the outside walls, you were saying is protected from a stray bullet?
The outside walls of that center will never see a bullet, because we're going to, to cut a trench in the floor, pour foundation, and then have CMU block put down, filled solid with concrete. So the range will be a box inside of the box that we're renting.
Any other questions at this point, council? I'm gonna open the, the floor for public comment, unless Kevin, you have anything else you wanted to add at this point?
I'm open for questions.
I have a question. I'm sure, and maybe Mr. Ratcher can answer, and we're retired police officers, I should know, but I don't remember. Delivering a firearm, in Pennsylvania, you can't loan a firearm to someone unless they have a carry permit. And you can't give a firearm to someone who is a prohibited, someone who's prohibited to possess. The chief's outside, I guess, he can, he might be able to comment, but, so I don't understand the legality of giving someone a gun that you don't know if they're allowed to legally possess the gun.
I don't know that question off the top of my head either, I would ask the applicant to...
We work closely with the ATF, we follow, clearly, we follow every federal law there is.
So, so do you have to have any kind of, any kind of federal, or perhaps some states you're in that regulate it? Do you have to have any kind of a...
Permit?
Cert, permit or certificate from them?
Absolutely, absolutely. We have to apply for a federal firearms license.
Okay, so, so the federal firearms license, I think, would dictate it, I've just never read a federal firearms license.
I'm sure it's being done legally, it doesn't make sense to me.
We're in Robinson, we've never had an issue. We have a whole department that does nothing but encourage local police departments, state police. There are clandestine FBI, Homeland Security offices across municipalities. We encourage those folks to shoot in our stores. Their cars in the parking lot, their uniforms in the store kind of set the tone for who and what we are, and make all of us feel better. Is there any, are there any security measures that, to stop someone from leaving there without their driver's license with a firearm? Well, I can't think of anything offhand that would stop them from walking out without their driver's license. We have a range safety officer, when we have numerous employees on the floor, paying attention to everything that we can, we have cameras that are monitored. So we hold on to that driver's license to help ensure that firearm comes back in.
The range safety officer, that individual is in, inside the range?
Inside the range, if one person's shooting, there is a range safety officer in there, all times.
So, I mean, there's a free app you can put on an iPhone and for free check criminal history in Pennsylvania. Like, I understand you may not be legally required to do that. It just kind of blows my mind that, because I'm familiar with some of the crimes we have in Monroeville, and I wouldn't give some, a gun to someone I didn't know. And just because you have someone's ID, doesn't mean we know, that you know they're not a felon or have committed violent crimes in the past with a firearm.
You said there are 50 locations currently?
That is correct.
What, what is the education for your range safety officer?
They go through numerous hours of training before they're ever allowed to go out on the floor, I think it's about 30 hours of training.
Are they certified by something, or?
Our, our instructors, our range safety officers are certified. We use United States Concealed Carry Association, USCCA.
Any other questions, council?
Do people bring their own guns and ammo?
Yes. When they bring them in, they're to be cased and unloaded, and you don't uncase until you are in the range, and you don't load until you're inside your shooting stall.
What's the percentage of people that bring in, or in the people that use your guns?
Probably 70/30 that people bring their gun, and, and it's 30% that rent. Now, what we get a lot of is someone is interested in buying a firearm, and they would like to try it before they do so. And then we'll have, different manufacturers will come in, and they'll put on a, a manufacturer's day. So they'll have their line of firearms available that people can rent and shoot, and see if they would like to purchase.
Chief?
Welcome. I'm not really sure I'm gonna be expert on this, but I can certainly, you know, do you sell firearms too?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So obviously, in order for them to sell firearms, they're gonna have to have an ATF license, they're gonna have to be registered to sell firearms. And you're gonna have to pass a PICs check, everything associated. PICs check is the Pennsylvania instant criminal history check that we do. Even if we are, we seize a weapon and we're gonna return it based on a court order, we still even downstairs, the Monroeville Police Department does a PICs check on anybody before they give a weapon back. And we've had people that are lawfully, or at least are legally allowed by court order to have weapons back, but do not pass that instant criminal check, and we don't give them their weapon back.
But chief, there, people are gonna come in, give their ID, pay money to rent a firearm, but we're gonna deliver a firearm to someone who has not passed a PICs check, and it could be someone who has a felony or, or is prohibited to possess a firearm. They're not doing a criminal history check, which, as you know, they, they could do instantly on the phone with the judicial, PA judicial check, so...
That's a good question.
Would it, would it have anything to do with it being private property?
No, you can't, it doesn't matter whether you're on private property, you can't, you can't deliver a firearm to someone who's prohibited to possess a firearm.
Yeah, I mean, well, certainly you can...
Is there a fee to that check?
You certainly can't sell one, that's for sure, we know that.
I, I just... You can't loan a gun to someone in PA that doesn't have a carry permit. I just bought a rifle at Dunham's, and they did a $4 background check in like two minutes.
That's the PICs check, that's a purchase. That's the Pennsylvania instant criminal check that it's done by.
Well, that's, that's what they did at Dunham's. I don't know if this gentleman might consider doing that and adding that $4 on whatever it costs to shoot, if that would help this process.
Yes, I don't, it would be interesting, that's, that's a good research question to ask, which I would gladly do.
Why don't we do this, why don't we do this? Let's have the applicant get some information. I'm sure you guys, you know, you're in multiple states.
Yes.
So, I think what council would like to know is whether or not giving somebody a weapon to use without having a PICs check, which is what we use in Pennsylvania, and maybe it's used everywhere, whether that violates any laws.
Well, we've been operating in Robinson for three years. We, we meet regularly with the ATF. And if that were an issue, I can imagine it would not have reared its head in one of the 50 locations that we have.
What do you mean by an issue, a legal issue, or do you mean that...
A legal issue. A legal issue, a litigious issue.
Yes, I'm not, I'm not even, that's one question, is it a litigious issue? The other, first off, just so you know for the record, there's no one up here more pro-gun than me.
Yes, sir.
My chief, right? But I'm anti-criminal and anti-giving a criminal a gun.
As we are too.
Yeah. So, like, on an iPhone, if you have an iPhone, there's an app called PAE Dog. Now, it only checks Pennsylvania.
You've got one on your leg there, probably.
Someone gives you ID, you can type their name, birthday in, and it'll tell you. So I understand why, I understand your argument that you're meeting the technical requirements of the law. What I'm saying is, easily someone could come in there who's been a mass murderer, just got out of jail, and used a firearm to murder people, give you an ID and get a gun from you. You see what I'm saying?
Yes, I would say that is very, very unlikely with cameras-
Based on what?
Cameras, driver's license. It is, I mean, I would say that there's a, if that is the person, the mass murderer that just got out of prison, probably has someone better to go, somewhere better to go get a firearm.
I'm just saying.
Yes, sir.
Could we research this topic?
The question I would have is, obviously, everybody has to be 18 or older?
Yes, sir.
There's no children that you're allowed in there? Are you allowed to shoot rifles?
Yes.
Okay, it's going to be, obviously, your range is going to be properly ETA'd, got all the stuff with the lead, all that stuff.
We have, the ventilation equipment, it's about $700,000. And the bullet trap system is what the US military puts on most of their bases.
I mean, that's the only, I mean, the outdoor range that we run, it has enough restrictions on it that indoor range is even 10 times more, it's a safety thing. That's what's concerned. Now, I would gladly research with the ATF. I can do that also, to see what exactly, I'm sure we have contacts there, and see exactly what it says about these ranges. I mean, there's, as you said, there's multiple. There's ones in West Smith, one, there's a handful. There's ones on, in the city. There's stuff, indoor ranges throughout the Allegheny County area.
If you could maybe talk to any ATF connection you have, and perhaps Kevin, if you could reach out to your company, just to see if this has been an issue in any of your other states or locations?
I know that answer, and it is none.
So I'd like to keep the conditional use hearing open, and we're going to move over to the public comment period. So if there's anyone in the audience, we can do it all in one shot, no pun intended. Anyone who's going to add some testimony for this item, if you could please stand, if you're going to add some testimony, please raise your hand. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Thank you. And then, the floor is whoever's.
Georgiana Woodhull. I'd like to know how, in the 32 states that they operate in, how many of their ranges are freestanding buildings, and how many are located in this type of a plaza, where there are multiple tenants?
There's 13 states, so I apologize.
Oh, 13?
Yes, 13.
I thought it was 32.
No, ma'am. And there's probably a total of three stores that are similar to this. Most of our stores are freestanding facilities.
Okay, and why did you choose this particular location?
Kevin, I'm sorry. You could just come to this other microphone if you don't mind. Thank you.
We like Monroeville. Our rules are, if, I wouldn't send my wife there at night by herself. That's not an area we want to be in. This is an area that we would like to be in. It's safe, it's secure, and it is, it fits our demographic. We, Pittsburgh, they're in a flat piece of dirt here. And the ground is very expensive. So to develop a piece here was cost prohibitive. You guys have Chicagoland prices on dirt, but we still have Midwestern demos. So that makes it cost prohibitive for us to develop ground up. We got lucky and did the store three, four, five years ago in Robinson. Prices have doubled for construction in the last three years. Steel has tripled, concrete is at least double, et cetera, et cetera.
Okay, another, looking over your security and your safety practices, and just hearing that, the fact that anybody can walk in there, show a license, you don't do a background check, in the next short period of time, there's a lot that can go wrong. It's a really busy area. There's a lot of people in the parking lot, a lot of people going to be inside your range, and it would just take a matter of seconds for somebody to, for you to hand a gun to somebody and have them do, you know, horrific damage.
Agreed.
Okay. Also, on this list of safety and security you have here, recruit promote local and federal agencies to use our parking lots to increase presence. As a taxpayer in Monroeville, and knowing what they're, we do have areas here where there's a lot of crime, and I hope to never see our police cars sitting in the parking lot there.
I want you to see them all the time.
I want, well-
I want them shooting. I want them training.
As a taxpayer, okay, as a taxpayer, and as a gun owner.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I would want them to be in my neighborhood, or to be in Garden City, or to be in these other areas that we do have problems in Monroeville.
Our hope is that they train. So that's what that comment means. I was in Memphis the other day, and the US Marshals were training there. So they had 15, 20 cars, and took over the entire range. That's the kind of stuff that we like.
Well, just for your general information, we have a range that we use and we share with the other agencies and also the feds. So we have one in place.
And that is not located in a shopping plaza, correct?
Not.
Okay. Well, the club that I had belonged to previously stood on about 60 acres. You've got a club on 48, Monroeville Pit Karen. In addition to that, you've got one on the opposite side of Route 48. You've got White Oak, and-
Those are gun clubs. Those aren't-
Those, they're gun clubs.
Retail stores-
Right.
And training-
Right.
Facilities. Okay.
And I just think that the, there's a lot that needs to be looked at here. And in addition to that, you're going to have over 60,000 visitors each year. I'm not sure what that's going to do to the traffic in that area. So I think there's a lot that needs to be considered here, and I hope that you look a little further into this, and especially with Mr. Cutt was talking about. I do have other comments, but I'm just going to hold off until next week. Thank you.
Lois Stromheller again. I am a big believer in training, and so that, in fact, when I did home care, lived in Orlando, Florida, I actually went through the Florida requirements. My arthritic hands prohibited me from using a handgun. All the best to people who are novices, because we need that. But I'm curious about sound abating to, you know, decrease noise, wall systems, maybe that are going to be buffers for reverberation by percentages. What I'd like to know is, you know, since these are going to be yards away from an intimate family or a couple who are dining next door, and the interior walls are literally yards away from this stuff, what would the systems to reduce this reverberation, this sound, this thud, this continual thud, not a thud one time that you hear outside, but, you know, something that you're going to hear through a course of a dinner, how is that decreased? By what percentage? 98%? 2%? That's my question about that, if that could be answered. And the, you know, I love that restaurant there. I believe the mayor and I ate there one time. And the-
I'll never forget it.
Yeah. And what are the-
Neither will we, Kevin.
Sure that was me.
Oh, I am. But it was before you got on council.
Okay.
What are the safety records? That's another thing I would want, the safety records of the applicant and their other shooting ranges. Seeing that many of them are not in an end of a various, you know, retail center. You've got a huge Indian grocery store there that takes a great deal of that parking lot up. You've got a beauty school at the other end. You've got Taipei Tokyo Restaurant. And then you've got the Olive Garden, which is the adjoining property. So you've got two restaurants. Now, the Olive Garden may be distance away there, but you've got jockeying for, you know, who comes and goes. We've also got other properties in Monroeville, many other properties. In fact, if you just look across the Mall Boulevard, you will see Joann Fabrics has, due to Wall Street tricks, gone out of business, not because they didn't have a good business model. But there's such a beautiful, well-lit parking lot. And why wasn't that considered? With as successful of a 13-state operation that you have, I'm sure that it's not prohibitive to go to a bigger parking lot and to a much better location. Now, Joann Fabrics probably has a lot more square footage, but I believe when you're looking at the characteristics of what you want to do in a, not only neighborhoods, this bothers me about neighborhoods, they need to keep their characteristics. This shopping center has people coming and going, going to, there's a consignment shop there. And I don't believe it's in tune with all of that. For all the good that you might be even getting reverberations while sitting there trying to eat a nice little dinner, I think that there are plenty of other locations along Mall Boulevard, which of course is very convenient to our convention center, and we do have very good attendance to our gun shows. And yes, you do want people who are novices to have proper training. So, you know, thinking this thing through, I want to know why they couldn't go to a property that's right across the street like Joann Fabrics. That's about all I have.
Mr. Wieldon, was, is there any issue with the parking, as far as the parking requirements?
No, parking is established by square footage, and they're not increasing the existing buildings. So the previous use already had parking spaces allocated. So they're just going to reuse the spaces that are there.
Counsel, any other comments or questions at this time?
I'll make one other comment about sound. Mr. Ali didn't bring it up, but their range, the actual shooting lanes are going to be closest to the exterior wall. Their classrooms and office space and general floor space is going to create another air gap between the range and the restaurant. So it's not as if there's going to be a wall and people shooting right against it, with somebody trying to eat their dinner.
Can we put that back up? That's the diagram of the-
Yeah, this is the former, yeah, this is the former G&amp;G Fitness.
Can you kind of, can you point out where, I can't tell what idea that is.
Orientally, please.
Yeah.
Yep, front door's here. So Olive Garden's sitting, you know, off of this side. This would be your retail floor, classrooms, private classroom. Receiving would be back here. This double airlock is the vestibule that leads into the range. So those are solid doors, rubber gaskets, and that helps contain the sound. So if one person's in one door, we should have, we should have, we have three doors here. So that helps keep sound inside. And again, solid doors, rubber, rubber gaskets on those doors. So that's kind of the layout that we have designed for this space.
Are you going to be shooting towards the back of the building or the front of the building?
Forward.
Front of the building. Could you reverse that?
It doesn't lay out nearly as convenient.
Right behind there, there's a sheer wall there.
Of our 50 stores and the hundreds of millions of rounds that have gone downrange in our facilities, not one bullet's left of the door.
Those Xs there, are those, is that where the wall, is that like the padding of the wall? You see what I'm talking about?
Show me again where you-
To the, to the bottom right corner.
That's a trap. That's a bullet trap.
That's the bullet trap.
That is correct.
What is that, quarter-inch plate beveled?
It is a, it is metal that holds pieces of rubber. The rubber slows down the energy of the bullet. So that will, we have an algorithm where we can tell, okay, we think there's about 35,000 pounds of lead inside the bullet trap. We have an outside OSHA compliant company that comes in, they suck out all of the rubber. What's left is the lead. The lead is shoveled up, put into 55-gallon drums, and it's recycled. So where we receive a check for the recycled lead. We recycle the brass as well.
What was the square on the left?
Hold on. Bear with my eyes. That is a gun storage room.
What's the hole, the big, the left?
The other dog.
Box, the other dog. Thank you, Mike.
Oh, that's just signage. That is just a signage plate.
Okay.
And again, like I said, our signage package violates your sign code, that we have drawn.
Why is it violated? Too big or what?
Too big.
Too big.
So you'll be applying for a variance?
Yes, sir.
Once this gets approved or not approved?
Correct. If it is approved, we would apply. When we get to that point, we would apply for a variance on sign code.
Counsel, any additional questions at this time? Kevin, was there anything else you wanted to add at this point?
If we were asked to do an additional background check on people renting firearms, we copy driver's licenses from people that buy ammunition, and it sends them to the moon online. We get all kinds of disparaging comments because it's a violation of privacy. And if we were required to do such a thing with people shooting on the range, I feel as though it would put us at a terrible disadvantage with the competition, that they would not feel this violation, in their opinion, I'm speaking for them, not myself, that they would not feel this violation of their privacy, their civil rights, somewhere else, but they would in our facility. I feel as though that would put Range USA at a, at a strong disadvantage.
Well, what, what competition?
Well, people will drive.
There's not a bunch around here for that.
Well-
I don't, I don't see a competition.
We ask-
There are.
Yeah.
There's others in the region.
People will drive.
So I looked up online, there was a law that prohibited firearm to be delivered to someone who was prohibited, but that law's been repealed.
Yep, that's what that says, yep.
Yeah, so, and I get it. Like, I know how criminals get their guns. They're not going to come into your store, show ID, and walk out with a gun. You know what I mean? It was more academic for me. It just troubles me that-
Understood.
That they could do it.
Yes, sir.
You know what I mean?
There are all kinds of crazy things that idiotic people can do, with cars, with hammers, with guns. And controlling the nuts is not an easy task.
Well, we'll certainly circle back with the chief and his contacts in law enforcement, but I do respect your stance.
I urge you to call the police chief in Robinson. Call the police chiefs in any of our areas. See if there's been a problem. See if we're a nuisance. See if there has been increase in crime. And I think you'll be very, very pleased with all of the responses that you get.
I do have one more question for myself. Just so, the three stores that are N caps, if you know it off now, great, but if not, can you at least get that information to us?
I know of one specifically is Florence, Kentucky.
Where are you operating now?
10 to 8.
Seven days a week?
I think so, yes. There's, I might close at 6:00 on Sunday. 10 to 8:00, Monday through Saturday. I think we close a bit earlier on Sunday.
Mr. Ratcher?
My recommendation to counsel is, because we have a couple of questions we want to have answered, that we table the public hearing, so that we leave the record open for Tuesday. So Tuesday, we'll have whatever information that we don't have now. We just really want to confirm.
Yes, sir.
You know, it sounds like you all know and have to comply with the laws, the ATF, whatever state laws there are. But let's just leave the record open so that we can confirm those things that we've discussed. And then, at that point, counsel can make a decision whether they want to say yea or nay, or whether they want to table it for more information. I don't think they will. But in any event, we should have a motion to leave, to table the public hearing.
Could I get a motion?
Move to table.
Second.
And table it just until Tuesday.
Correct.
Tuesday.
All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, that this item is tabled. If you could just get your information.
No.
Thank you. The ayes have it. That item is tabled. Okay? Let's go. We have one more conditional use here. Can you, can you make one more work? Yeah, the public hearing is, yes, the-
You continue it by tableing it.
Yes, the table, we table it, which means that we will continue it next Tuesday, November 11th.
And that's for the purpose of getting the answers that- And that's for the purpose of getting the answers that we want to confirm.
Correct, but it still says on the agenda, as with everything, as it would normally. We have another conditional use approval, 25-7-C, the Chabad Jewish Center of Monroeville. This is a conditional use approval. Mr. Graziani, please.
The Chabad Jewish Center of Monroeville is requesting conditional use approval pursuant to Article 5, Section 504.000, place of worship of the Monroeville zoning ordinance as amended to permit the operation of place of worship. The property address is 2520 Mosside Boulevard, identified as tax parcel 857-R-023 in the Boulevard zoning district, and this is, I guess, you're facing Roma Joe's to the right.
Uh, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Although I'd like Roma Joe's to become kosher, so I could get a coffee.
All right. Rabbi, welcome, welcome.
Yes, thank you.
Welcome to this meeting. We kept you here, we want you to, you know, we usually, we come to many of your events, and you also come to many of our events in the community, but I don't know if we've ever had you at a council meeting, other than doing maybe...
Invocation.
Invocation, so we really wanted you to experience it, so thanks for coming.
Thanks for coming here all night.
Thanks for coming out this evening, so the floor is yours, if you'd like to talk about...
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, everybody. Yes, Mandy Shapiro. I am the Rabbi of the Chabad Jewish Center of Monroeville, a resident of Monroeville, proud resident of Monroeville, on Monticello Drive.
So, you know what, let's, I swear you in, if you don't mind.
Absolutely.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
So the Chabad of Monroeville was established in 2009 as part of a global Chabad movement dedicated to bringing joy, community, love, and acceptance. There is around the world over 5,000 Chabad centers. It's the largest Jewish organization around the world, and we were fortunate to have an opportunity to open a Chabad center here in Monroeville. Early on, it began with small meetings and get-togethers in people's homes, private around the community, and as that continued to grow, we began to host many events around different rented spaces in the community, hotel lobbies and conference rooms and other areas, and the services we offered were worship services, Torah study classes, holiday celebrations, personal meetings, coffee with the rabbi, or really anything, just community get-togethers, really, that's what it's all about, just to share our commonalities and to give a sense of belonging to everybody there. And as we continued to grow, there was a need for a functional home base, and we were fortunate about 10-plus years ago to find the space that we currently are at, which is right here on Mosside Boulevard, next door to the AAA. That's kind of served as our home base for the last 10-plus years. We've seen increased participation, a wide variety of programming that we offer, and not just within the Jewish community, but for a wider audience, the whole community. I would say if, I guess it's a good time, maybe, if I may also tell you about our annual Hanukkah event that we do, put on for the entire community. Everyone's invited to come participate. This is just one of many events that we get involved. I know Debbie, thank you before for pointing out that we're involved in the food drive and different distributions around, over the years, and, but as far as the space that we are in, we, we were actively looking for a place to continue to expand, and an opportunity came with the building on 2520 Mosside Boulevard, so literally right up the street from this red circle to that one. Thank you. And the building is that red building right there, next door to Roma Joe's, across from Dollar General, and this permanent home would be essential for continued growth, to be able to serve the Jewish community as well as the broader community with the multi-level programming that we offer within Monroeville and the eastern suburbs. So we see great potential in this new space, and we are seeking counsel's approval, and just as important, their blessing, for conditional use for a new home for Chabad Jewish Center of Monroeville.
Is this separate from Temple David?
Yeah, it's a separate organization.
It's separate, not a separate organization, but it's a separate congregation?
Yeah, it's a separate congregation.
Okay.
Are you going to be remodeling inside, open up space, or...
At some point, yes, soon, yeah.
Well, you need to get approval first.
Oh, absolutely, yeah. There are multiple steps over here. The first step is the, is the conditional use permit, and then we'll go to the next steps, absolutely.
Are you buying this building, renting this building?
Yes.
Paul, are all the conditions have been met?
Yes, they've met all the conditions.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
No.
Okay. Yep, so at this point, I'm going to open the floor for public comment. Is there anyone from the public who'd like to make comment on this item? Seeing none. You've got to be sworn in, you've got to come up. Debbie wants to keep you here longer, Mandy.
I can't keep...
Swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
I do.
Thank you so much.
It has been my honor and privilege to, to know and to work with Rabbi Mendy since, really, when he, he was a kid when he came, so he still is, we're all kids of heart. But I remember driving him around Monroeville. I was with the Chamber of Commerce back in those days, and, and just like showing him, like, you know, this is Monroeville, this is, this is, this could be home for you, and we have, my husband and I have been involved with, with Chabad all of these years. We have benefited from, from being part of Chabad and having Rabbi Mendy here in the community. It's just, it has been a wonderful experience, and I believe he has added a hundredfold to, to the people who come to Chabad and what he has offered back out to the community. So we just really do want to continue to grow.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to add any testimony for this item this evening? Hearing none, counsel, any other questions or comments? And yeah, I would just agree that, you know, that you've certainly been a great public partner here and a friend of the community, and so is the pod center, and to see, I know you've been looking to move for quite some time, we had many conversations, you and I, and I'm finally, I'm very happy to see it's finally getting to the point where it is, and counsel will be considering it next Tuesday. Mr. Ratcher, anything else this evening about this item?
No, no, just a motion to close public hearing.
Motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This item is closed.
End next week.
Tuesday, the 11th, we'll consider this, thank you. And we're going to take a 10-minute recess, just for our stenographer. We'll be back. We're out of recess, and we are back in session with our November counsel work session. Counsel, the minutes to consider for Tuesday, the 11th, would be the Citizens Night Meeting of October 7, 25, the counsel work session meeting of October 7, 25, and the counsel regular meeting of October 14, 25. Any questions or comments, corrections or additions to those minutes? Hearing none, reports of the tax collections, anything this evening? Any questions or comments? Hearing none, list of bills and budget transfers, any questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, payroll report, any questions or comments? Hearing none, once again, this is not a voting meeting this evening, all of these items are to be considered at Tuesday's November 11th counsel meeting. We also have the capital improvement program, list of purchase orders, POs to be approved. There is an attached list in the blue section, any questions or comments, counsel? Hearing none, moving to our development applications. The conditional use items we just went through at length were for 25-6-C Range USA and 25-7-C, the Chabad Jewish Center of Monroeville, as we went through earlier in the meeting. We are going to continue the conditional use hearing for Range USA at next Tuesday's November 11th meeting, and the Chabad Jewish Center conditional use hearing has been completed. Both those items will be in front of you for next Tuesday. Any questions or comments about either of those items? Hearing none, moving to our motions. Mr. Graziani, please.
Yes, I just want to cover number nine with a little bit more color, if I can. If you're looking in your packet, we talk about the white section, which follows the orange section, which had to do with those last two conditional uses. So, so looking at the next year's budget, as you all know, the budget is a combination of several budgets. There's the liquid fuels budget, there's MS4 budget, there's a capital improvements program budget, as well as a general fund. The general fund, obviously, is the big attention. The draft three that is in your packet, again, behind the orange section, you'll see some of the details, is a, is a budget that's balanced at $41,390,705. So if you just want to keep your hand in this part of the, and then go back to that page behind the orange section, you'll see a page that is landscaped, as opposed to portrait, it's, if you will, sideways. And that gives you an idea of what last year's budget was. For 2025, you adopted a budget of $41,65,266, and as I said, this budget is $41,390,705. That's a little less than 1%, actually 0.79% larger than last year's budget. If you follow down to the bottom of that page, under the interest earnings, you can see the budget balances with the use of beginning balance funds of $278,094. So that's about 0.67. Now, we could balance the budget simply by increasing the earned income, for example, by that amount, or we could decrease expenses by that amount, but I want you to see it just simply as a pass-through, if you will, to the capital improvement program, and we'll get to that in just a moment. So just want you to orient to that. Behind that page, that landscape page, in the counsel packet, are a couple more pages where you'll be able to see the expenditures and the revenues by department and area of revenue funds. Behind that portion is every department's staff makeup and breakdown. Just to give you an idea, staffing represents basically 50-some, 55% of our expenses are staff. We have 175 employees in the 2026 budget, 95 part-time employees, and of the entire budget, about 55% is staff. So you'll want to take a look at those following pages. That's a report that's in your packet, and that report is five pages long. Behind that is a summary of that staffing by area. So again, this would tell you how many full-time employees are in each department, and we've also provided for you the 2024, the 2025, and 2026. So you can note staffing changes by department and have an idea. Behind that in your packet is the proposed salary ordinance, which is for non-union employees. We have three unions in the community. We have a public works union, a police union, and a clerical union, and their salary adjustments for 2026 are prescribed by collective bargaining agreements approved by the unions in this body. The non-union employees have a salary ordinance that we do each year, and this budget has been built on a, across-the-board, flat 3% increase, which is in line with what the union contracts have negotiated, with a little bit of nuances for each union, and you'll be able to ask questions on that, or see that, or have any information on that, if you need. So I just want to get you familiar with what's in your packet. Let's talk about schedule. Going back to your agenda on item number nine, as I've mentioned already, the budget that we're presenting is even, if you will, balanced at $41 million. There is no tax increase of any respect. There will be some adjustments to fees, as there already are, we discussed earlier this evening, for example, adding to an animal control officer duties, that there's a fee. Those fees, we do approve with the budget. To give you an idea of what the taxes are, we did increase taxes last year for the first time in over 10 years, and the mileage was set at 5.5, and it will remain that, and you can see the other taxes as well for mercantile, DE transfer, and so forth, earned income. The schedule for the budget will be, we have a, two Tuesdays following next Tuesday, with Tuesday 11th is the meeting of our regular monthly meeting, the 18th and the 25th. Departments of the municipality will be making presentations on their budget, and you'll be able to ask questions. That will probably be the fourth iteration, if not the fifth iteration of the budget, because Josie never stops, and to keep up with her, we've got to keep working and making improvements. And for those of you who've watched us over the last couple of weeks, we spent a lot of time going line by line and trying to really get the numbers right. So the November 18th and 25th, starting at 6:30, there'll be meetings in this room to review the budget and its entirety level. Again, we've given a lot of information earlier this evening, we spent time with information for the non-union salary rate, so you have an idea of that. Looking forward to working with counsel as a goodbye gift to our partying members and the mayor and Representative, Councilmember Stevenson. We wanted to make a budget that was really simple, no drama, no tax increase, pretty much steady. You can't really, in this day and age, have a budget that increases by less than 1%. I would, I would be surprised if you were at your home able to have a budget that increased by such a little amount, just given what gasoline costs, what expenses cost with healthcare and everything else.
One question, if I may?
Sure.
In order to balance the budget, how much did we have to take out of the general fund?
Yeah, like I said, what we've done is to balance the budget, we are looking at reducing the reserve by $278,000. To put that into perspective, many nonprofits like to start the year with maybe 10%, some do 15%. We have an unofficial policy of 20%. Right now, we have about a $24 million unrestricted fund balance and an over $30-some million if you include the restricted amounts, like, for example, liquid fuels, MS4 budgets. So the reduction of that by $278,000 is what we're looking to, to make it balance, but that is really a transfer into capital. And if you recall, the capital improvement program that we adopted in August was really getting that fund balance, which is nearly 80% of our budget, or something like that, down to, you know, 20%. Specifically on the capital improvement program, in your packet tonight is what we're drafting for the 2026 spending plan and capital improvements. It is a reduction of $2.8 million of what we projected in August. Remember, the plan in August was a plan, and we said every December, we would tweak it, to right-size it for that budget. So it was about $9.7 million is what we passed, or we thought we would do in 2026. To make this budget be where it's at, we took out $2.7 million of capital expenditures for 2026. So when you looked at our first draft, we were nearly $4 million out of balance. When all the department heads submitted all of their requests and included all of the revenue estimates, we were $4 million out. And thanks to department head work, and Josie's work, and Kate's work, and MK and Joe, we've got that down to about a gap of $278,000. So how would we do that? We did that by looking seriously and not playing the games with you where we underestimate revenue and say, oh, there's more revenue than we thought, or overestimate expenditures and say, wow, we didn't spend as much as we thought. We, we don't think that's a great way to do budgeting. It's good to be cautious and conservative, but it's also kind of a shell game if you kind of play it too much. So we were really trying to be accurate on expenditures and really accurate on revenue. So what that did was increase revenue, to close the gap of $4 million, and also by doing the expenditures and taking some of those down, sometimes you can imagine a little padding in some revenue lineups. So we really asked ourselves, is it necessary, based on past experience, to have this number in here? And many times, we said no. So the gap of $4 million is now down to $278,000, and again, that requires no tax increase. And I think Josie could correct me, and we can easily get this by next Tuesday. Almost every budget you've adopted probably for the last 10 years has had some fund balance in there. In fact, last year, we had $3.00 million coming from the fund balance. So this is a very standard, in fact, normal practice in this community, and I think the $278,000 might be one of the lowest that this council's considered for a long time.
Since I've been here.
What's the fund balance today?
So, great question, so glad you asked that. So, according to September 30th, 2025 unaudited cash flow reports, our total ending balance is $37,993,343. So again, it's a $41 million budget. Now, the, the restricted, restricted amounts include developers, MS4, and liquid fuels. If you net that out, we're looking at $24,826,000... If you net that out, we're looking at $24,826,549 at the end of September 2025. Now, to put that into perspective, when I started in January 2024, the beginning year, the total spendable was 22 million. We bought a convention center, and now it's over 24 million. So we developed a capital improvements program that was anticipating taking that amount down to roughly 20% of your budget. If you have a $41 million budget, about $8 million is really what you need to start the year for unrestricted reserves. That's very prudent. That's over and above what most local governments would do. In fact, many local governments have to do tax anticipation notes to make it work, because they might only start the year with like 1% of what their budget need is, and real estate taxes don't come in until really after the first quarter. So what I'm saying is, to put it into perspective, you could easily do 8 to 10 million dollars as a fund balance and be pretty good shape. In fact, you would exceed a lot of standards.
I would think, yeah. Yeah, we've never, again, since I've been here, we've never had to take a tax anticipation note. So that's, that's pretty good.
Yeah, so we were at about $22 million in January 2024. We're at 24 million, almost 25 million at the end of September 2025. So thanks to your leadership and others, we've, are in good, solid finances. Now, we might not be what Cranberry with the AAA Moody's bond rating, but we've got a good AA Moody's bond rating and almost no debt. This will be the last year, in fact, that's a good thing to note. In this budget, one of the expenditures is about $1.6 million to retire the debt, something like that.
Might be 1.8.
Yeah. So it's a big number. Now, going into 2027, you'll be without that number. Right. Thank you. Thank you for asking that question, because I think it's important for you and all of us to understand balances. You start the year with money, you want to end the year hopefully with the same amount of money, hopefully a little more. But, you know, if you're doing it well over time, you're not taking advantage of the taxpayers either. So if you have more revenue than expenses, then maybe reduce taxes or put more infrastructure in. And that's what the capital improvement program is all about, was really putting money in equipment and roads and pipes and all that good stuff.
Anything else for your presentation?
No, I, I really appreciate the patience for this evening, because unfortunately, there's no more important thing than budget. It's the taxpayer's purse, it's a sacred honor to have it and to have stewardship of it, but we have another three more times in November to talk about it. And as you can tell, I'm pretty excited about that. I can't say thank you enough to the staff members, Chief Cole, who's not in the room, and the other department heads who've put a ton of time in, and they know the go-around, they'll look at it a bunch more times before December comes, December 9th. Hopefully, it's one of the easiest budget votes you'll have, because all of your questions will be answered, and you'll have full and complete confidence what you're voting for, so that Mayor, Mr. Stevenson, you could just go out with a bang and not have to worry about tax increases and all those worried things. So, stay tuned.
We'll decide that.
Yeah, we're not there quite yet. Let's get to the end.
We'll get there.
Counsel, any other questions about this item? So obviously, these, these things that you're pointing out to us, Alex, certainly, all this information will be in the actual budget itself. I know these are just highlights for this package, all the information.
Lots of trees will be cut and, and so forth, as you get closer. And, and, you know, that's a hard thing to do at this point, just because we are going through drafts. So to print 180 pages and then turn around and another week, give you another 180 pages and so forth, but we'll give you paper.
Great job, and great job of staff getting us to this point, and we'll get it done by December 31st. Moving through the agenda, counsel, for your consideration on Tuesday will be nominations for various boards, commissions, and authorities, and then we have resolutions to consider for next Tuesday. Number 11, Mr. Graziani, please.
Yeah, these resolutions are dealing with asset seizure, it's, it's in a capital expenditure. We are recipients of asset seizure funds, and we are using those to buy detective vehicles. We need to do that by resolution. The second one, or the, the rest of those deal with the discussions we had this evening. As it probably is safe to assume, some of those may be able to be resolved with code, working with those community, you know, those individual property owners, and they might come off the list, as Jason said, that's possible. And then the ones that proceed will be on the agenda for Tuesday, November 11th. Any questions on those, counsel?
Nope. And moving to our reports of municipal staff. Mr. Ratch, anything for the evening?
Nothing, thank you.
Mr. Graziani, back to you.
Yeah, so you know, Thanksgiving is coming up, make sure you mark your calendars on how that affects refuse of recycling. Unfortunately, our second hearing is the same night as the tree lighting on November 25th, so some of, some folks can get there early and come over to this, or, or make arrangements. We will obviously be recording this on the 25th hour event. I'm not sure how Communications is going to be doing the tree light, or the lighting event, the Old Stone Church, but probably both will have highlights on YouTube. The Police Benevolent Association is having a fundraiser for November and December, thanks to Chief Cole's benevolence. The police officers of Monroeville are not allowed to have anything but a mustache, no facial hair besides that, no goatees, no beards, but we have No Shave November. And what the Police Benevolent Association, for $50 each month, $100 total, they're accepting donations from staff members and police officers to grow beard and be donating to the local food banks here in the community. Pretty exciting that they have that. And Chief Cole's not happy about all this. If you know anything about the chief, he's gone along begrudgingly, but he's allowing some of us to imbibe and grow some facial hair. If it's shaved off, it's because Eva, my wife, has tired of it and says enough, and hands me a razor and says, be gone with it. And I will live by that. But I did make my donation, and would encourage anyone in council, it's not too late to do a No Shave November, and join in the fun, and donate to the Police Benevolent Association of Monroeville.
Great, thanks for highlighting that. Dr. Lang, anything this evening?
Yeah, I'm really sad I can't participate in the Shave November. But no, I have nothing.
But we do have Casual Friday for non-interested shaving staff members.
Very good, thank you. Mr. Hugis, please.
I'm good.
Thank you. Ms. Rock.
I don't have anything. I've, I've been working on the budget for the past month.
Yep, we're going to hear definitely more about that. Thank you so much. We've got our reports of our council members.
I have nothing.
Mr. Hizzy, I guess we'll start with you.
I have not, you don't look right at me.
Mr. Stevenson.
I'm with Joe.
Very good. Mr. Crutt.
Nothing, thank you.
I yield my time.
Mr. Adams.
I'm with Bill.
Mr. Williams.
You know, Election Day, a number of people come up to pay their COG bill, which is the flood project that the federal government mandates us to do without funding it. This is a TC Valley COG, or Turtle Creek Valley COG. That's the organization that collects the tax for Monroeville. We don't want to assure the public that your money, your $120 a year, or whatever it is, goes to Monroeville for the MS4 projects, which keeps the retention ponds clean and flood control projects. So I just wanted the public to be aware of that. And now the COG is at 300 Oxford Drive on the third floor, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Biondo.
Yeah, there are boards and commissions, at the end of the year, boards and commissions have openings. A lot of them have applicants already, but I would say that Parks and Rec for the third and seventh ward are open. If you know anybody, get the word out. And that's all I have.
Great, thank you. And I also take a moment, we had a, the reason why we're meeting this evening on a Thursday, typically it's the first Tuesday of the month, this is a Thursday, the first Tuesday of the month, this month, was election night. And we could have some, some changes here up at the dais, and also some, you know, four more years for a few other ones. Mr. Hizzy, thank you for putting your name in and getting reelected to the seat there. We have Mr. John Washington, who will be taking place of retiring Mr. Stevenson. We have Mr. Mike Adams, got renewed for another four years, the voters had him come along again. So thanks, Mike, for renewing and putting your time in for the community. And certainly, there are, Mayor-elect Dennis Biondo is, is going to be our next mayor, starting in January, January 5th at 7:00 PM. You know, not that I'm, you know.
Counting down the days.
Not that I'm counting down the days, but congratulations to you. And, and Allison Ramsey, who is in the audience here, she'll be the new councilwoman for the seventh ward. So welcome, welcome to, welcome to the meeting. So you picked a good one to come to. And our county council representative, Michelle Chapkes, was reelected for another four years, and she definitely supports our community as well. And with that, I would like to seek a motion to adjourn. Second. All favor?
Aye.
Oppose? This meeting is adjourned. Thank you and good night.